Good morning and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning on a finite resource. Pray that you will guide us in such a way that we respect private property rights, but also recognize that land use decisions can be impactful across the entire community. As always, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces. Pray that you will guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Okay. And do we have, is Commissioner Hagan joining us virtually today?
Yes.
If I'm on the phone right now.
Oh, okay. Got it. So with that, can we do a, ask the clerk to do a roll call, please?
Good morning, Kemp.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Overman.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
And Hagan?
Here.
Thank you. You have a form.
Thank you. And we'll move now to Mr. Moreta with our withdrawals, continuances, and remands. Mr. Moreta?
Thank you. Good morning, Board members. Joe Moreta, Development Services Department. For the record, we have six changes. Excuse me. Thank you. We have six changes for the agenda itself, starting on Agenda Page 3, Item A2, Application PRS 21-0362. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Number 2 is on Agenda Page 6, Item B2, Application RZPD 21-0554. The applicant is requesting the item be continued the October 12th Board of Commissioners Land Use Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Number 3 is on Agenda Page 8, Item B8. A correction has been made to the report as follows: To accept a performance check in the amount of $4,375, a warranty check in the amount of $3,304, and authorize the chairman to execute subdividers agreement for construction and warranty of the required improvements. Next one is number 4 on Agenda Page 9, Item B10. A correction has been made to the report as follows: To accept a performance check in the amount of $16,686, a warranty check in the amount of $1,432, and authorize the chairman to execute subdivider agreement for the construction and warranty required improvements. Also accept a performance check for the placement lot of corners in the amount of $3,750 and authorize the chairman to execute subdividers agreement for performance placement of lot corners. Number 5, Agenda Page 13, Item E1, Application PRS 21-1039. The applicant is requesting the item be continued to October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Finally, number 6, Agenda Page 14, Item E2, Application PRS 21-1041. Additional support documents regarding a neighborhood meeting conducted by the school board have been added to the backup. Also revised staff report with changes to conditions of approval been added. Revising the condition number 13 to add pre-K and middle school into the text, and also changing the language of conditions 24 through 27 in the staff report to add prior to the issuance of any certificate occupancy to prior to the occupancy of any new structures to the site. So the timing of that will be recognized to recognize the triggers in that condition as well. Moving off the changes, and now moving to the agenda itself. Item A1, RZPD-180996. Staff is requesting the item be continued to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A2, PRS 21-0362. The applicant is requesting the item be continued as a matter of right to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A3. Staff is requesting the item be continued to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A4. This application is out of order and is being continued to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A5, Personal Appearance, 21-0695. Staff is requesting the item be continued to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A6, Personal Appearance, 21-0696. This application is out of order and is being continued to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A7. This application is out of order and is being continued to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A8, Personal Appearance, 21-0840. The applicant is requesting the item be continued as a matter of right to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A9, Personal Appearance, 21-0918. The applicant is requesting the item be continued as a matter of right to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A10, Personal Appearance, 21-1034. The applicant is requesting the item be continued as a matter of right to the Board Meeting, starting at, October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A11, Personal Appearance, 21-1035. The applicant is requesting the item be continued as a matter of right to the December 14th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A12, Personal Appearance, 21-1037. The applicant is requesting the item be continued as a matter of right to the December 14th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A13, Personal Appearance, 21-1038. The applicant is requesting the item be continued as a matter of right to the December 14th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. And finally, Item A14, Vacate Petition V20-0012. The petition is being continued to the October 12th Board Meeting, starting at 9:00 a.m. Commissioners, that concludes the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion to vote on the change?
Second.
Okay. We have Commissioner Smith, and seconded by Commissioner Myers and Overman. And seeing no further discussion, can you please do a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And we'll now move to the consent agenda. Do we have any, anyone?
Move the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner White, move the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Overman. And seeing no further discussion, can we please have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. So we will now move to, and by the way, anyone who has an Item B, your item has been approved, so anyone with an Item B. It's quite a lot, actually. We're moving, we've got quite a limited agenda this morning, so that's, and we'll move now to the administration of the oath. If you're planning to testify today, please raise your right hand and be sworn in by the clerk.
Good morning. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move into the public hearings this morning, I'd like to take an opportunity to remind all of the speakers, including those participating in person at Saunders Library and those participating remotely, of our meeting participation process. When it's your turn to speak, I'll recognize you as a speaker. For those participating in person at the Saunders Library, I ask that you respect our social distancing guidelines, remain seated, and please don't approach the podium to speak until I've called on you. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to our public hearings, our, Section C, vacations. And Mr. Moreta, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner. This brings us to C1 on the agenda. This is a public hearing for Vacate Petition V21-0007. Real Estate Services staff will present this item and be available for questions. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Carrie Allen, Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. Can everyone see the map?
Now we can.
Okay, great. Item C1 today is Vacate ID V210007. This is a petition by Mark Allen Newsom, Tamara Newsom, Mary Zaleski, and James Zaleski to vacate a portion of a 50-foot-wide, unimproved public right-of-way known as First Street. This is lying between Blocks 2 and 8, within the revised flat of Rodney Johnson's Riverview Highlands, recorded in Plan Book 25, Page 21 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. Petitioners Mark Allen Newsom and Tamara Newsom are in the process of purchasing the Zaleski property. This request is made for the purpose of creating one contiguous parcel unless all properties are under common ownership. The proposed vacate area is generally located east of Baum Riverview Road and south of Tucker Road in Riverview, and consists of approximately 11,750 square feet, or .27 acres. This petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of this portion of the right-of-way. However, Tampa Electric Company has requested the reservation of a utility easement over the proposed vacate area due to facilities located and maintain their end. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Thank you. And I have, no one signed up to speak to this, but this is a public hearing, and if there's anyone that is virtual or in person to speak to this?
We have no one live, Commissioner.
Okay. And with that, we'll close the public hearing. And is there any board discussion with regards to this?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman, and seeing no further discussion. I'll just, just for the record, I always look at these vacations a little bit more, and because I'm concerned about, which I know is a priority, connectivity, but not necessarily automobile connectivity, but connectivity in terms of pedestrian and bicycle right-of-way. And I hate to give up what is public land. And when I saw this connected to the north as a, you know, an opportunity, and I was, you know, I said, do, does the landowner purchase that from us or anything? And, you know, in the wider picture, it actually is part of a grid that was there. And I just, I, you know, I don't, in the, in the scheme of things, the way that that looks, I really, I don't feel comfortable giving up that. I don't understand why, why we should, because it looks like an opportunity for connect, pedestrian, bicycle connection to the north. And so I'll just, I'll just say that, just say that. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I ask the same questions because I, I share the same concerns about giving up public land that has been platted for connectivity or right-of-way. And I know we've, you know, we've made a mistake, we've made mistakes in, in traveling down that path. And once you've given up, given away that, that right-of-way or that publicly-owned land, you can't ever get it back. But when I did ask about it, I was told that there is no way that this could ever be the kind of road that it was platted for. Now, could it be pedestrian and bicycle access in any meaningful way? I'll just ask that question of Mr. Gormly.
So Commissioner, you're correct about the automobile connection as the, as the site to the south is currently configured. That's been zoned, planned development zoning, and it does provide access to the north. However, the access point does not align with this particular right-of-way. That access point is, is further to the east. I'm looking at the conditions of the zoning right now to see if it allows, we typically allow pedestrian connections at any point in a project. Do you sometimes have, have a condition for that? I say that the site to the south, I don't believe is required to make that connection. It's definitely not required to make that connection to that right-of-way for bicycle, pedestrian, whether, whether it could be permitted if the, if so, if so desired, it's possible. But, but at this point, when that project to the south is built, there would be no requirement for them to make that connection to the, to the right-of-way.
And if I could just follow up, you know, as I discussed this with staff during the briefings, I, you know, was also looking at the bigger picture, which is sometimes hard to see on these zoomed-in little maps, which is something I've been mentioning all along. I'd like to see the zoomed-in, and I'd like to see the wider context, and I don't, we don't have that in this case. But if you were to look at this map and, and think back out to it, you can see that in this case, you have Tucker Road and you have Baum Riverview Road, it kind of at a really acute angle. And so right here, this little piece of it is so close to the intersection that I became comfortable with, with the idea that this connection wouldn't be that important to, to many houses. There's only, you know, a few houses in that little corner. So I became comfortable with it because of that. Thank you.
I'm pleased to hear that, because I also asked to zoom it out to a bigger map I was trying to get, which wasn't provided, which I think is really important in this. And I was pleased to see there was a little grid there. One of the questions I asked is about the block size there, uninterrupted. It was, I think, something like 1,500 square feet. And since I've been paying more attention to blocks, they're saying that blocks are walkable at 200 or 400 square feet, and that Tampa's a walkable, somewhat walkable place, because in Tampa, in the city, we have 500-foot blocks. And I was wondering, and this is like a 1,500-foot block, but when you're saying that it's close to the other, you know, you know, a few houses over, I think that's a good consideration. I'd really like to get away from these long blocks and not give up vacations, but under the circumstances. I appreciate that you point, Commissioner Smith, pointing that out. Okay. Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, can we please have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Hagan? Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Moreta, we'll move to our first public hearing on the regular agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to Item E2. E1 was continued. Personal Appearance 21-1041, located in the northeast corner of Summerfield Boulevard and Panther Trace Boulevard. This is a 796-acre, primarily residential, planned development. It does have a school site existing on it. The site is approximately 26 acres. That is the subject of this particular application. The site on the planned development that is existing with the school has a kindergarten, elementary school on it. This request is to expand that to go from pre-K through 8th grade, which will take it from pre-K through middle school. The application is proposing essentially to change a 26-acre site that includes a school, and the focus of it is on a 10.16-acre site that currently is a neighborhood park shown in the planned development, to change that to a multi-use facility for athletics and, that will be used along with the school site. Staff has evaluated this, and we are recommending approval subject to conditions. We did, just, just to remind you, we have submitted the changes to the conditions as part of the changes at the very first part of the hearing, and those primarily are configured to recognize the pre-K through 8 in the, in the zoning conditions, and also to change the timing of the conditions to the occupancy of the, of the site versus certificates of occupancy. Staff is recommending approval, and we are available for, for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And is the applicant present?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Isabel Albert with Half Associates, 1,000 North Ashley Drive. And here representing the school board, and with me today is Amber Dickinson, who's with the school board, as well as Michael Yates from Palm Traffic that's going to be going over the traffic conditions. So this is actually an interesting site. It's a joint venture between the school board and the county. The school board owns a southern parcel, and the county owns a northern parcel, which is approved for a park. And the school is currently, the school site is currently improved with the Collins Elementary School. And the school board wanted to expand the school to include middle school, and by doing that, they wanted to do a joint venture with the school, the county site, in order to use some of their areas for track and fields. And then it's also going to have a 15,000-square-feet, a community-use facility. And so this is basically the gist of the application. It was, you know, worked with a close relationship with this county, and I am going to transfer it out to Michael Yates that can go through the traffic conditions. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Michael Yates with Palm Traffic. I'm going to put up a graphic. All right. So this is the, oh, perfect. This helps a lot. So this is the existing school site here, Summerfield Boulevard, Panther Trace here. And so what is proposed is the addition of the middle school here, and then the community center in this area. They will be adding a, moving the existing access north from this location all the way up to this location. And so what we did was a transportation study to look at the existing conditions and the future conditions with the school and the community center, and developed a comprehensive transportation improvement program, so that fixes existing problems as well as accounting for additional capacity associated with the proposed expansion. And so what those improvements are, is a southbound left turn lane into the school, a northbound right turn lane into the school that does not exist today. That is about 675 feet long. We're also proposing a southbound right turn lane that is approximately 525 feet, an eastbound left turn lane onto Summerfield Boulevard that is approximately 375 feet, and then a westbound right turn lane on a Summerfield that is approximately 300 feet long. When we started this study and started coming in, the county had an existing CIP project that was looking at existing deficiencies in the area. And so what we did is, we, from the results that we showed, this is what we started with. The county had started some construction plans, but they put the project on hold to allow us to finish the traffic study to evaluate both conditions, both with the existing deficiencies and the future. That is really a quick summary of the study. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, and we have no speakers signed up for this. So we have no one there, correct?
No one, except for the applicant.
Okay. And no one virtually. So with that, we'll close the public hearing and move to board discussion.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion to, by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers to approve the item. And I'll just say this, I think, I remember being briefed on this prior, and looking over when it was being planned, I think about six months ago, or when it was first ventured into. And I really think that these are the kinds of, you know, kinds of plans that we should be doing for the schools. I thought it was a much better use of the property. I've been saying that our school properties for elementary schools, they've gone 25 acres, and middle school's 50, and high school's 75. And when I checked out the standards in Orange County, which were recently dropped, but even prior to them making those below those numbers of acres, they were, they were lower than, for whatever reason, Hillsborough has, which I think is one of the considerations to have. But I think this, this was a, a good use of property, and I'm, I'm pleased that this, this occurred and this was put together. So with that, oh, Commissioner Overman?
Thank you. And I agree, it's, it's a good use of property. It's a good partnership between the county and the, and the school district. And it's probably been stated already, but given that we have a budget hearing coming up, and the projection for this school to be completed in 2022, I'm assume, can I, is it safe to assume that within our Parks and Rec budget, we've actually allocated the improvements that are being promised for the community and the Parks and Rec section of this?
Commissioner, at this time, I know that there is, there's a program for funding the transportation improvements. I believe that the park facility is, is in the planning stage. I don't know whether it is, is actually funded at this point in time.
Okay.
The community center. That operates separate from, from the school.
Understood. But, but given that the project actually includes, you know, a Parks and Rec element associated with the, the project, I was just curious if we have that sort of in the queue to see if, in fact, the project moves forward and the school is completed in '22, that the park construction could actually be part of the '22 budget? Can anyone address that particular question?
Again, I can't speak for the actual funding of the construction of the center. The, the design of the site, the stormwater needs that would accommodate the park parcel are being all done as part of this development.
Part of this process.
So let's say it's getting site, as part of this construction, it will be site-ready for the park facility to, to be in place.
To be in place. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And with no further comments, at this time, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers, seeing no further discussion. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moreta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to Items E3 and E4. This is Community Development District subject matter. Mr. Brian Grady of our team will be, will be making the presentation on these items and also be available for questions. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. Agenda Item E3 is CDD 21-0480, is petition to establish the Mangrove Point and Mangrove Manor Community Development District. The petition is considered by, submitted by Forestar Real Estate Group and Corporation to establish the Mangrove Point and Mangrove Manor CDD. The Mangrove Point and Mangrove Manor CDD will encompass approximately 113.54 acres. It is located on the east and west side of US 41, north in the intersection of Lysy Road and US 41 in the Paula Beach area. No objections to the proceeding were raised by the reviewing agencies. Staff finds this application meets the requirements of Chapter 190, Florida statutes for the, to establish a community development district, and recommends approval. Available for any comments.
Thank you. Do we have anyone, the applicant or anyone there to speak to this?
The applicant is available for questions.
Okay. And seeing no one signed up, and no one there to speak, if, do we have a motion by the board?
Move approval? Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Myers, seeing no further discussion. Can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan? Hagan?
Hagan, yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moreta.
The next item, again, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services, E4. This is CDD 21-
Mr. Grady, sorry.
Sorry. This is a application, CDD 21-952. Petition expanded the boundaries of the Touchstone Community Development District. This petition has been submitted by the Touchstone CDD to modify the boundaries of the Touchstone Community Development District. The CDD is adding 4.03 acres. The modified CDD would encompass approximately 222.25 acres and is located on the west side of 78th Street between South 36th Avenue and, to the north and South 49th Avenue to the, to the south. No objections to the pro-CD were raised by renewing agencies. Staff finds that the application meets the requirements of Chapter 190 Florida statutes to expand the boundaries of the community development district and recommends approval. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, no one signed up for a public comment. Is anyone there or does the applicant want to say anything at this time?
There's no one in the audience and I believe the applicant may be online.
Okay.
And just one house, housekeeping measure, I just wanted to note that the staff report transposed the numbers and has the wrong application number. It says CDD 21-592, but again, it's 21-952. So I just wanted to note that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, um-
Move approval.
Commissioner Overman has a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Myers, second. And seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, we will now move to the regular agenda. Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item F1. This is rezoning for a planned development. It's 20-1266. It's located at 1841 Baum River View Drive. Commissioners, moving to the overhead, you'll see the site is located just to the northwest of Rodine Road and Baum River View Road. Commissioners, this is a request for neighborhood commercial uses in the planned development for approximately 10,600 square feet. When we evaluate these types of requests, we evaluate them pursuant to the comp plan's locational criteria, which is a nodal criteria. The node, in this case, is defined by Rodine Road and Baum River View Road, and it has a 900-foot area that would move up to the north headed to the site. The site does not reside within that nodal area. It's 903 feet approximately away from the intersection. Accordingly, the applicant would have to ask for a waiver to the locational criteria. The site is surrounded by AS1, AS 0.4 and AS1, which is essentially a combination of agricultural districts that permit agricultural and residential uses. Because of the fact the site exceeds the locational boundary of the nodal criteria, which directs non-residential zonings in the comp plan, and because of the surrounding uses, staff felt that it would not be consistent with the comp plan and would be incompatible with the area. Typically, in these types of scenarios, what you want to see is you move away from the intersection, you want to see a down, a downward planning and intensity. The applicant has made several concessions to the site. They actually remanded this back from one of the previous board meetings and went back to the ZHM, reduced the square footage and provided some buffering and also other site design techniques. However, because of the location, because of the precedent, we feel that would set, you know, with regard to the intensification of the node and not a downward transition in intensity, we felt that we could not support it. It's not consistent with the comp plan and we also feel that it would be incompatible with the area. So we are recommending denial. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could have, at this time, the applicant?
Truett Gardner, can you hear me?
Yes, you have 10 minutes.
Perfect. We'll be shorter than that. Truett Gardner, I have the pleasure of representing Palmetto Capital Group. And with me in my office is Tyler Hudson and Megan Smith, who's working the PowerPoint. And then we also have Jeff Lazenby, who's with Palmetto Capital Group. And Joe Moreta did a great job of summarizing this request and I'll try to distill it even further, which the central question of this is, in this instance, should the commercial locational criteria under Policy 22.2 of the comp plan be strictly adhered to? Or alternatively, do the efforts to mitigate potential adverse impacts justify a waiver as specifically contemplated under Policy 22.7 of the comprehensive plan? We believe a waiver is justified in this unique instance. And with that, just a quick recap of the history, you'll go back one, Megan. We started this process a year ago. We were first heard by the zoning hearing master in March. We then came before you to ask for a remand to completely redesign this project, which we have done, that traveled back to the hearing master in July. And we're now in front of you requesting approval and a waiver from the locational criteria. Joe did a great job on the site itself and the location. Just a couple of points to point out, the site is just under five acres. It's currently vacant. It was previously used as a, as a fish farm. You can see kind of the pot marks in the land there where the fish farm was. And in the vicinity, immediately to the south, is an auto repair shop with open storage, along with that same owner has his residence. So I think that starts to add a little bit of context as you move away from that intersection. This area is, is quickly growing and residential, but unfortunately, the neighborhood serving commercial has trailed behind and that's the niche that this project is, is trying to fill. Next slide. Again, as Joe mentioned, the development is just over 10,000 square feet. The proposed FAR is a .05, which is one-fifth of its potential. The heights and setbacks are residential in scale. Next slide. Okay, this was the, the prior plan and the two boxes that you see in red were two buildings that were previously proposed. And so this is what was before you when we asked for the remand. And then next slide, this is the revised plan. And I'm going to just give you the laundry list, which isn't even complete, of all the changes that were made, again, under the effort and with the spirit of trying to mitigate against any adverse impacts. So first, the development plan was previously over 28,000 square feet proposed. We've trimmed that back to just over 10,000 square feet, a 62% reduction. We've reduced the number of proposed buildings from three to one. We've limited the allowed uses from all commercial neighborhood uses to only one use and one use, and that is variety store retail. We've provided enhanced landscaping. You'll see that in a future slide. We've provided over two acres of open space. We've created a tract in that, the slide before where the two buildings were, that is purely just an open space tract. That pink-purple diagonal that you see running across is a wetland. And so this was a tract created to, for the sole purpose of protecting that wetland. No development is allowed to occur within that. We've limited the hours of operation for the store. We've committed to enhance architectural features to give a more residential aesthetic, which you'll see in a future slide. And finally, we've committed to installing a sidewalk of over 700 feet in length for pedestrian connectivity to connect to the residential subdivision to the north. Next slide. These are the architectural features that I mentioned. There's a raised-up parapet, enhanced glazing, the color scheme, and then the, the stucco. So not your average dollar store that you see. Next slide, this is the landscape plan. Again, this is just showing the tract, the, the developed tract was the northern tract. To, to the south is the new tract that we created to protect the wetland. Next slide. This is a comparison, as I mentioned, of the before and the after. Previously, we were asking for all C and uses. We've now restricted that to variety store retail, the 62% reduction in the square footage, the reduction of the number of buildings from three to one, the reduction of the FAR, the increase in the previous area, enhanced bufferings, which you see in the conditions below, the limited hours, and then the architectural designs that we've committed to in the conditions. Next slide. So again, as Joe mentioned, in that intersection, 900 feet is what's used for the locational criteria in this instance. When we originally before you, we thought we were in excess of 1,000 feet, but upon further review, it turns out we're only 903 feet away. So we're just three feet shy of meeting that initial threshold of 900 feet. And then Tyler's going to speak to the capital improvements, but again, also just wanted to underscore the pedestrian connectivity that we're committed to, which is about a 700-foot sidewalk connecting to the subdivision to the north. So with that, Jeff Lazenby with the developer is going to speak and then Tyler's going to wrap this up. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi there. My name is Jeff Lazenby with Palmetto Capital Group. I'm the developer for this project. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to you guys today. Thank you very much. Truett covered that very well, what we're trying to do here. Want to let you know, we have been a, Palmetto Capital Group has been a preferred developer for Dollar General for better part of a decade. Preferred developer in 16 counties in the state of Florida for Dollar General, including Hillsborough. Have built several stores in this county. And I think, hopefully, staff would say that we've, we've worked well over the years with them and, and, and put in a product that the county can be proud of. Would like to do the same thing here. As Truett mentioned, we've been working on this project for over a year now, specifically working to make this rezoning something we, we can be proud of and put a good product in the ground. Dollar General, when they want to go somewhere, they spend a lot of time internally with their planning department, trying to find areas where there's a bit of a grocery or neighborhood convenience desert, where there's a need, where they see a need. When they, after spending several months, finding the market areas they want to be in, they hire us to go find a spot for them in that market area to be. Dollar General is a, is kind of a unique, has a unique niche with the, the way they do their development program. Their market radius is really only about a mile and a half. They're truly meant to really just serve the neighborhood within a mile. It's, it's, they've been very successful, as you know, there's a-
Excuse me?
19,000 stores nationwide.
One second.
Excuse me, sir, I am, I'm looking to see if this material that you're talking about, really concerning Dollar General's business plan, is that something that was put into the record previously?
I'm not sure it was. I did not speak last time. I was just trying to give an overview of who I am, more than anything.
Okay. If you could just be attentive to speak to what is already in the record at this point in the process. We can't really have anything new as far as factual testimony or descriptive material about Dollar General. So if you could just turn your attention to the record and confine your, your testimony to that.
In, in a, Jeff, we've got two minutes left, if we, and I know we want Tyler to wrap this up on a few comments.
Okay. I, I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that's in the record and that Truett has already said. In an effort, in an effort to mitigate the locational criteria, I'll, I'll repeat, we, we cut our proposed square footage by two-thirds. We're providing enhanced buffering. We've agreed to provide a pedestrian connection to the north of about 700 plus or minus feet. We have enhanced architecture to try to fit the residential char, character of the area. We've limited our proposed use to just one use and limited the operating hours of the store. If I could share my screen real quick, I just wanted, just to, let me, this whole project is hinging on the locational criteria. I just wanted to show you the difference between, the purple site is our site, the black box is what meets code, if, without a waiver. So in an effort to offset that, that separation right there, we're providing all these mitigating items I just listed. I just wanted you to see that, visualize that. This is the difference between meeting code and not meeting code and, and, and all the things we've been trying to do to mitigate and offset that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. I'll, I'll wrap up very briefly, Commissioners. Tyler Hudson, 400 North Ashley Drive. Policies 22.7, 22.8 afford you the discretion to waive the intersection criteria, which is generally that you do not meet. That's quantitative and we're not arguing that. The considerations that are set forth in the comp plan for you to consider are environmental impacts. The site was surgically designed to avoid any wetland impacts. Two, the availability of public infrastructure. There's actually three CIP projects that are funded for this site for full signalization, adding turn lanes, adding three lanes that are expected to be completed in about 15 to 18 months. And finally, just from a compatibility standpoint, there's been such a proliferation of single use, single-family development in this area, that what is really lacking is the sort of neighborhood commercial use that the res for future land use category-
Thank you. Your, your time is up, but actually, we do have, it's always, we do have 10 minutes for proponent testimony, proponent party of record, which, proponent, that is in support.
That's all we have for now. We're, we're happy to answer any questions that you, Commissioners might have.
Great. Thank you so much. So we have, no one signed up but the applicant for public comment, but we have proponent party of record. Is there anyone there to speak or, you know, that hasn't signed up?
No, ma'am. There's no one here in the audience.
Opponent party of record testimony? Any opponents, anyone against? Okay.
We don't have anyone in the room.
And seeing none, does the applicant want to waive their rebuttal?
We will, but we're more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great. And now if we can hear from Planning Commission staff.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located in the residential four, future land use category. It is also located in the urban service area and within the limits of the River View Community Plan and the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. As previously stated, the subject property does not meet commercial locational criteria as outlined in the future land use element of the comprehensive plan. Our Planning Commission staff does acknowledge that the applicant has utilized site planning techniques that result in the commercial buildings being located closer to Baum River View Road, which is a collector roadway. The applicant is also committed to a single use on the site, a variety store retail use. The stormwater area is located on the western side of the property, which helps to mitigate for impacts to the residential lots adjacent to the subject property. Staff also acknowledges that the commercial general and commercial neighborhood zoning districts are located within 900 feet of the intersection of Rodine Road and Baum River View Road. The parcel immediately south of the subject property has split zoning, agricultural, single-family estate 0.4 and commercial general. Consequently, the zoning and development pattern transitions from commercial to low-density residential as you move away from the intersection. A retail use would disrupt the gradual transition of uses from the intersection and the overall development pattern of the residential area that is located further away from the node and closer to the subject site. While the application has attempted to move closer toward compatibility through site planning techniques, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed development does not meet locational criteria and does not fulfill the intent of Objective 16 and its accompanying policies with regard to compatibility. The intent of the residential four, future land use category is to designate areas that are suitable for low-density residential development. In addition, neighborhood commercial office and mixed-use projects serving the area may be permitted, subject to goals, objectives, and policies of the future land use element and other applicable regulations. In addition, sites in the residential four, future land use category are required to meet commercial locational criteria unless a waiver request is sought under Policy 22.8. The site does not fall within the 900 feet of the Baum River View and Rodine Road intersection. The parcel is located approximately 1,000 feet away from the intersection and consequently does not meet commercial locational criteria. The request for this use would disrupt the gradual transition to the single-family lots that are located immediately to the north and west of the subject site, undermining the compatibility policies of the future land use element. Planning Commission staff- Planning Commission staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners not approve the waiver to locational criteria. And lastly, the site is also located within the residential district of the residential, I'm sorry, the Riverview Community Plan, which primarily calls for residential development. The Riverview Community Plan also requires the provision of appropriate and compatible buffers and transitions to existing adjacent land uses. While moving the commercial buildings closer to the roadway, focusing on one retail use, and placing the stormwater area to the west do help to mitigate the impacts to the single-family residential lots. A request for a retail use would still disrupt the gradual transition from commercial to residential from the intersection. The proposed plan development request for the proposed retail use would not provide an appropriate and compatible transition to the single family and the low-density zoning immediately adjacent to the site and within the general area. And consequently, the request is not consistent with the vision of the Riverview Community Plan. And based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed development inconsistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoning hearing master recommendation?
The zoning hearing master considered this request to rezone 4.86 acres from AS4 to plan development to develop up to 10,640 square feet of variety store retail use. The request was remanded by the applicant to reduce the amount of square footage of the request. As you've heard, the Planning Commission staff has found the request to be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan as the property does not meet commercial locational criteria. The Planning Commission does not support the requested waiver to the commercial locational criteria as it found that the surrounding existing development consists of large lot residential and agricultural operations. The Planning Commission staff acknowledged that the applicant has utilized site planning techniques and reduced the square footage of the use, but concluded that a variety store use would disrupt the gradual transition of the uses from the intersection to the residential area. Staff refuted the applicant's assertions that Policy 22.7 supports commercial development on parcels such as the subject property, and stated that the request does not fulfill the policy's intent as it does not contribute to a gradual intensity, or gradual reduction, I believe is what was intended, of the intensity of uses within the area. In summary, the Planning Commission found the request to be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The Development Services Department also does not support the request as it found that the expansion of commercial uses on the property will expand the commercial development beyond the intersection and be in conflict with the planning objective of creating appropriate transitions to lesser intensive uses between residential and non-residential areas in the community. At the zoning hearing master hearing, testimony in opposition was provided by homeowners residing across the street from the property. Testimony from these homeowners focused on the existing transportation issues on Baum River View Road and concerns that the proposed development would worsen the traffic congestion. Additionally, concerns were expressed regarding the incompatibility of the commercial use in the area. The zoning hearing master stated that the applicant's representative had testified that there is precedent for commercial uses in the area. The zoning hearing master found that those examples are either located within the commercial node in accordance with the comprehensive plan locational criteria, or residential support uses, or on parcels that are zoned agricultural, presumably in conflict with the permitted uses of the zoning district. The zoning hearing master found that the requested plan development for 10,640 square feet of variety store retail is inconsistent with the existing development pattern, the surrounding zoning districts, and the requirement for commercial locational criteria, and recommended denial.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to board discussion. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you've heard, this parcel does not meet locational criteria for commercial development. You've heard through the zoning hearing master report that there is neighborhood opposition. There are serious traffic concerns in this area. And as you can see, neither the zoning hearing master nor Development Services staff, nor the Planning Commission, were able to find any justification for a waiver of locational criteria. And we have recommendations of denial from all of the above. So with all that being said, I will move to deny item F1.
We have a motion by Commissioner White. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I, it's my understanding that, that the rule is they have to be within, let's see, 75% of the development has to be within the 900 feet. It is, would, Johanna or Adam, would you please explain that, that it's not just a matter of, like, the edge of it has to be within 900 feet? 75% of a commercial development would have to be within 900 feet? So I was wondering how accurate the applicant's representation was about, oh, we're only three feet off?
So I believe what you stated is correct. The locational criteria distance from the intersection is 900 feet. The requirement is that for a parcel to meet locational criteria, at least 75% of it needs to be within that 900-foot distance. In this case, I believe what the applicant was, was, you're correct. The, the, just being at 900 feet still would not meet locational criteria. The property would need to have 75% of its frontage within that 900-foot distance. So I believe that that reference to 903 was, it would be the starting point for the, for the project. But even if it were, say, four feet to the southeast, it still wouldn't be meeting the location, locational criteria due to the amount of the parcel that was not within that 900 feet.
So it's not just three feet off. It's, it would have to be moved considerably to be within the node.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And, I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to accept the arguments of everyone, including the residents. And, and I'm concerned about the, the traffic in this area. But I just did want to ask, it's currently a, a fish farm, and the, the comp plan is saying, is saying it's res for. So I'm wondering, you know, what the alternatives are on a, a former fish farm to be within the comprehensive plan? How, how likely is it? You could theoretically have, like, 1,800 houses, 1,800, 18 houses in that almost five acres of res for? So I'm kind of wondering, would the traffic be worse with the 18 houses? Would the, would it even be possible on a, a former fish farm? Do you have any insight into that? I know that's kind of odd, but.
Yeah, just, we haven't done the analysis of the, of the residential, what that traffic generation would be. It would, it would, given the size of the project at four units per acre, it, it potentially could yield 18. It would be, it would have to be smaller lot sizes than quarter acre to meet that, to yield that number. As you have your, your lots, then some of the land area would be taken up by other infrastructure improvements, roads, and stormwater. So expect the yield to be something less than 18 if it was developed as a, a subdivision certainly would with quarter acre lots. Anything else to get that number would take some, some clustering on site of smaller lots.
And, and finally, well, is it, you know, I see that there is this wetland, and, and one of the things they're trying to do is protect the wetland. But did the conditions have a conservation easement over that?
Commissioners, the applicant's proposed conditions didn't have a conservation easement. It designated that as, I believe, floodplain on the site plan. So the site plan would not have allowed any development activity to occur in that wetland. But it did not.
So I'm, you know, I'm kind of putting these ideas out there for consideration by the applicant to be able to bring something back that would be acceptable to the board. And I think, you know, when, whenever an applicant is saying that they will provide a site plan that protects a wetland, we should begin looking for that conservation easement to keep that, to keep that promise as property is, you know, bought and sold to down the line. Somebody can get a, a zoning that has a, a site plan protecting the wetland, and then sell it, and the next person, before it's even developed. But the next person then buys it with that zoning and site plan, and it becomes harder and harder to really protect the wetland as you go, as you go down, even though the first person might have had very, very good intentions, but then, for whatever reason, traded that property away. The, the last thing I will say is, I noticed that we ran into the, the issue with this applicant being unable to provide anything by way of context or, or explanation of, of, you know, who they are even to this case because it wasn't provided at the zoning hearing. And I have been wanting to remind us and ask staff to remember that we have asked, as a board, for workshopping our zoning process and, and some of those restrictions that we have that our, our people are bumping into, whether they are applicants or neighbors or members of the public. And, you know, I think it's been a little while, and, and I'm looking for, to have that discussion with staff about our, our zoning process, as well as how the Planning Commission fits in so, so we can begin really understanding and, and considering any changes to, to that process that's been in place for a long time and has still several cumbersome elements. Even though we have, we have begun changing that, there's still some really cumbersome elements that would be worth looking at. So, thank you. With that, I, I'm going to be supporting the, the motion on the floor. But I do feel for the applicant and hope they can massage this into something viable at that intersection. But also, I think the traffic is a concern, too, in the, in this area that we should look at next time around.
Thank you. I'm just going to jump in here with a couple, the, the fish farms, because you could see it was. So that is a brownfield condition now, right? Can you, I, I just don't even understand. Can you build residential on that?
It's, I'm not, Commissioner, aware that, that is a brownfield designation. I know that they may, there may be activities that previously taken place that could qualify it as that. It's not uncommon for fish farms to be decommissioned and, and put to another use, such as residential use. That, that, that does occur.
I see. Okay. So the, here, here's what I just say. I have to tell you, it's de minimis off the locational criteria. It just, even though we had 75% and whatever, I feel like it's de minimis. I feel like we've been begging for some kind of commercial trip capture in that area, and it really bothers me that we would, like, something. I feel like the applicant has gone, jumped through hoops to make this as acceptable as possible. The other thing I have to tell you, I've been looking, I thought we should make overlay that has 10,000 square feet. I've said this several times before because I've looked at it as kind of like best practices for retail. If you limit it to 10,000 square feet, it's usually something that isn't a chain. In this case, it is. But they're making all these, I, I think you need, in fact, to help the traffic, that you need some trip capture, and you need this, you know, some kind of neighborhood commercial, which this essentially is, there. And I feel like the, you know, of course, the traffic, you know, everywhere the traffic is bad and, or in that area. And we've been very sensitive, but we keep throwing down single-family homes without, you know, doing this kind of, putting in commercial trip capture opportunities. And for us to just, like, look at this and say, you know, I don't even, I'm not even sure, the more I think about the 900-foot locational criteria, that it's a good criteria that I think is, it may be something that we've had traditionally, but it may be one that I think we kind of have to rethink because I've been, you know, thinking about integrating our neighborhoods more to, I mean, that's what I thought we'd been talking about in terms of town centers, trip capture, neighborhood commercial. And the fact that they went and reduced it by 62% down to 10,000 square feet, which I was like, 10,000 square feet? Wow, that's my, that's my sweet spot for, you know, where, what size we need for commercial. And, you know, I just, I, you know, I, you know, Commissioner Smith, I don't know. Maybe we could, I, I agree with you about the conservation easement. I've been all over those. I'm just wondering, I'd like to, actually, the applicant might even be able to answer now if they'd be willing to do that. That's probably something they weren't even asked to do. But maybe, would the, I'd just like to ask the applicant, would they consider a conservation easement over the area that is the wetlands, as Commissioner Smith outlined? So it's not developed in the future?
Sure. Truitt Gardner reporting, North Ashley Drive. So what we've done on the site plan is designated it as a tract that cannot be developed. I'll defer to Jeff Lazenby, who's the, the contract purchaser, to see if he'd be willing to take that next step on the conservation easement. Because I do understand, obviously, somebody could rezone the property, and then that southern tract would be developable. So as a belt and suspenders, Jeff deferring to you whether conservation easement would be acceptable.
To me, it would. Unfortunately, it's not all up to me. So I can't answer that completely right now. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, I mean, maybe a continuance, just if that's an issue that you think, huh? A remand again? Okay. And I'll let you, but anyway, well, with that, I don't have anything else to say, but I'll recognize you, Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. And I, this is a difficult kind of situation because I recognize that the community itself has desires for a rural community. It is in the urban service area. And so that does sort of set the stage, and it's right on the edge of the urban service area. So it's in the area where there does need to be some kind of commercial support in the community. We have historically, in our, in our deliberations, have said, you know, how far is it to the nearest grocery store? And it's too far, so you got to get in the car. And so, in this particular case, depending on what commercial project ends up being there, connectivity to the Planning Commission's goal appears to be close, but, but not there. The other thing that I noticed is the sidewalk tends to go away from the commercial node. It goes the opposite direction, as opposed to down to the intersection of Rodine and Baum River Road. And I really never really quite understood why are we moving away from where, an area that we've designated to be more commercial, or at least appropriate for commercial locations? The other question I had is, at the intersection of Rodine and Baum River Road, the northeast corner, northwest corner, my apologies, does appear to be highly dense and full of trees. Is it developable? So if, if that area is the only area where commercial can be, and yet it isn't safe to invest, you know, to, to develop there because it's either full of wetlands, it's right across the street from large area of water. from large area of water, so it would appear as though there's a lot of water in that location. Now, is it locationally possible to actually expect, given our planning guideline, that commercial could be, in fact, at that intersectional node? And so if it's not possible, then this is close. Can we get there with creating the connectivity to the intersection by having the sidewalk go south instead of north? And those are the things that I looked at. It looks like there's a business concession, we are protecting the wetlands, they reduce the amount of commercial space. I don't see a report in the area of the amount of retail commercial that's available to the citizens that live in that district to see if, in fact, it is a food desert. And while in agriculture, you don't end up with as much food desert as you do in urban areas, but in this particular case, is it possible that there is a demand for a retail grocery type of, or a retail store to identify an opportunity for creating some commercial support to the residents that live in that area? But I'm going to follow through with, not necessarily disagree with the Planning Commission's opinions, because I think there's still some opportunity. So I would support a remand, should that be chose at the stand.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
What a fascinating conversation this is, actually. I feel as though every issue we've been talking about for the last eight months somehow comes to bear in some way. And I want to just make two points, because everyone has really, I think, expressed a lot of it. The first is that I agree with Commissioner Kemp about the 900 feet. If you think about what it is we're trying to accomplish, moving a few feet in the direction to create, to create the transition, I think is exactly what we should be doing. And to your point, Commissioner Overman, if the parcel on the corner is undevelopable, that's even more of a reason. But quite frankly, I think there are very, very few other places that something like this could go and make any sense at all in this community. And then the second thing is just this issue of trip capture and providing, this is, I was under the impression that this is exactly the type of thing that we're trying to get into these residential areas so people can go out and buy basic groceries without having to make a huge trip. And I was just going to, to say to Commissioner Overman's thing about the sidewalk, I would say that it does make sense for the sidewalk to go north because that might actually provide the opportunity for residents to walk to the store from some of these clusters of subdivisions and residential lots that we see up here. So my thought is that a remand would be the appropriate thing to do, because I think if something like this goes down, we're in some ways speaking out of both sides of our mouth. We're saying, we want you to have a commercial presence that provides certain amenities, but we're going to, we're going to make it almost impossible for that to happen if we're not at least somewhat flexible. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes, this has been a very fruitful discussion, and, you know, I also was feeling kind of on the bubble, and I think we've, are gelling at some things that may be able to be resolved if we have a remand. So I'll make a motion to remand and list all the conditions, you know, for review of our whole discussion here. So make the remand perfectly open, like not limited, but pay special attention to connectivity, sidewalks, as well as bike, safe bike paths, and have a look, I think if the applicant works with staff to have a look at north, south, into the residential area, what makes the most sense and brings us back, you know, reasons to feel that that is being really addressed, along with a conservation easement to commit to the protection of the wetlands in the area, which, you know, by the way, is getting more and more important with our frequent rain, heavy rain events to prevent flooding in neighborhoods, not just coastal areas, but in neighborhoods to have these wetland areas. And I know, I read through some of the neighborhood comments, and they were concerned about, you know, the kind of local wildlife that you have in a semi-suburban area like this that could also benefit from a conservation easement on a wetland, however small, however small and unconnected it may seem to be. And the last thing I would ask is, if you look at that elevation and, you know, I appreciate the Dollar General role in our communities, but I would ask if they're, if they have a second pass at this, if they could consider design standards that might go along with the Riverview Community's sense of place, so it's not such a plain tote box that might make it more palatable and seem to fit in a little bit more and look like we really are considering putting in a local neighborhood store. So I do appreciate that Dollar General is, you know, carefully considering where they're going to have the market for their enterprise, and that they do provide a wide range of retail in some of these food desert, underserved areas. So I appreciate that very much. But I just would ask if you take a second look, if there might be a little, something to make it comport with the Riverview Community Plan specifically in this area. So I think I've hit everything, but as I say, I'll leave the remand open for any adjustment.
So Commissioner Smith has made a substitute motion to...
Second.
Remand with a second by Commissioner Cohen. And I just want to add too, it's a good point, because I had noticed that too about the, on the intersection there, it's very treed. And we've seen a lot of where the wetlands is right at the intersection, so when we have this locational criteria, I've seen this over and over again, and we're having gas stations built on wetlands, and it may be driven in part by that locational criteria, you know, being there, which doesn't make any sense. Like maybe if there's a wetlands or a wooded area, that locational criteria should be waived somewhat, just automatically, and, or, you know, work differently. It just doesn't really make sense to me. But I think there's been a lot of good discussion with that. We have a substitute motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Cohen, and seeing no further discussion...
Just announced the remand date would be October 18th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, October 18th at 6:00 p.m. Okay, seeing no further discussion, can we please have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, and with that, we have no further business at today's land use meeting. Is that correct? Okay, so we're going to adjourn, I'm sorry, I thought I was...
He was just confirming and thanking.
Confirming, okay, thank you, I didn't hear. Okay, so I'm just going to confirm that we will be adjourned here. They need for technology to reset up a 15-minute break. So it looks like, why don't we, actually, why don't we just meet again at 10:45? Is that good with everybody? Gives us a little, okay, great, thank you.